I'll call the regular city council meeting for the city of Dunsmere at 6:02 PM on June 6, 2019. We'll begin with the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll now move into roll calls.
Councilmember George?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Present.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Here.
Councilmember Art?
Here.
And Mayor P.
I am present. Alright, thank you. We'll now move into special presentations and announcements. Seeing none scheduled, we will move into public comments. Oh, sure. Mr. Art, would you like to go out and make announcements?
Well, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I have great news. I wanted to announce to the public and the city council and the community. We are having a 2019 pool season.
Yay!
With the support of my district board as well as the community members, we have verified, we have eight qualified certified lifeboats. We are planning the planning process. The pool is being drained as I speak. So I just want to let you know that we are going to have a season. We're going to open up the week of the July 8th. And we may go longer than my plans are to go six, but we may go more than six, seven weeks, depending on the weather, the season. But I wanted to just acknowledge you guys for helping us. It's a hard call to make, but to assert everybody that feel good and the positivity that came out of that, the pool is very important to our residents and our community here in Dunsmere.
Thank you.
Thank you, Art.
I'd like to take a special thanks to Councilman for Chrysler, who really helped a lot with recruitment towards the... Yay!
We're paying you with the test, not me, but thank you.
But thank you, everyone. So thank you for that announcement. We'll now move into public comment. This is the time or schedule that we allow for residents or anyone in the public to come up and share with us anything that is not on the agenda or anything that is on the consent agenda. You'll have three minutes if you would like to make a comment. Alright, seeing none, I will close the public comment section and move us into council and staff member comments. So if there's any comments from the finance committee or any comments from any other business, this is the time to speak up. I will begin with Councilmember George.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to take this opportunity to stress the need for some rethinking, reorientation. I know that for the last several years, the Neighborhood Watch Committee has kind of foundered and was small and sparsely attended. But working together with the Disaster Preparations Committee, we're trying to work up this side of the equation by identifying block captains throughout the neighborhood and getting everyone signed up and doing all of that. We were planning on trying to get into a regular rhythm of having a meeting once a month. But once again, because of exist- yeah, existent needs, whatever that word is, it was just canceled again because we're having a special meeting next Thursday. So I can understand the need for shuffling around, but this is like the second time and the first time we shuffle twice within the same month. I'd like to be able to give the citizens a sense that if they want to get involved and help get ready for whatever might come down the line this summer, that we'd be able to have a place and a time and let them know. So I would just like to, without carrying you further here, suggest and hope that down the line, we could work scheduling to identify a time that can be in violet for the Neighborhood Watch. And I know right now, I'm working with Sergeant Westine to see if we can come up with perhaps going to the high school next week. And the idea is that we're trying to identify block captains. We've identified block captains for certain blocks, but not for others. I've had a map printed up that really clearly states where all the different blocks are. We're going to be working to get that all up and also online. I just want to say that moving forward, hopefully we can have a time where we can have Neighborhood Watch and that council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan, do you have any staff or council comments at this time?
Yeah. The members of the account company, the family that took over moving forward with the committee, and we invited a representative from Travelers Hotel Project to come in with us. We're still in the beginning stages. We're not anticipating completing our project in the summer of 2020. At least one summer for the down project. They're in the engineering stage. They've done a lot of work on that side. So we have similar construction or demolition here. Just an update on that. The finance committee is in a free time city council, less than a council meeting, and continues to work on budgets. Quite exciting. I encourage everyone and the audience to attend those meetings as well. There's a lot to discuss. We have adopted several recommendations that they pretend to target and can be dealt with early in the address at the budget meeting next week. The only recommendation that we applied to turn on the dime today was we moved to recommend that the city drop a line of TUT grants or TUT-funded projects. And just, it is a by nature of general fund tax. TUT is money coming in, money coming out. It's coming out of the general funds. It's just, we go back to its original name officially, which was a community promotion fund. So we'll just call it the trade center verbally like that. It's more of a linguistics decision, but...
But I believe that's on the agenda for tonight.
Alright.
Is there any other comments? Councilmember Kaiser?
I got a thing that was pertaining to Moss Creek Falls and Happy Moon. I was a little bit more confused than when I started. It does, there's a few things on there that doesn't show me like where's Moss Creek Falls. So after reading it, I thought of all the topics of this. And then I'm trying to put Tom Heston, this and Dave Whipperham together. It was a few years ago that Mr. Whipperham came up and we had a conversation. And he mentioned that he has no problem building a bridge, bringing a bridge, placing a bridge for us, but all that, you would negotiate it to a Saint Germain. So I think that maybe if I put two of these guys together, things that progress that the Trail Association has made at this time could be beneficial. So that's where I stand. I'm just trying, trying to push along. But that's really the only thing I have to store as that's concerned. I do have an announcement that I'm dying to... I have to cancel the Railroad Day, I have to cancel the Soapbox Derby. We've been doing it for seven years. But the statement's been made that the chamber was unaware that there were babies, three, four, and five, and six-year-olds racing. For seven years, they didn't know this. Which infers that Big Dave took it upon himself to put these children in jeopardy, risk, all that. And that is not the truth. I got the money for insurance, but the chamber still decided that three, four, and five, and six-year-olds were too young. This breaks my heart. This would have been the eighth year. I purchased 22 trophies that I don't get to give out. So if you guys really want to see your Soapbox Derbies again, I suggest that you talk to your chamber comrades. But again, it's been said that I did this on my own. I would not do that nor even think about it. I'm chicken. I wouldn't do that. So I have to set the register. Madam Mayor, thank you for letting me get that.
Councilmember Art?
Three items. One is to recognize that today is the 75th anniversary of D-Day, June 6, 1944. And I hope that we do our business today and recess this evening's meeting in honor of all the veterans that have served our country. I watched a documentary last night and there were two survivors of the USS Arizona. And when the Japanese bombed Pearl Harbor, they successfully dropped the bomb through the top deck of the USS Arizona in the ammunition magazine. And the ammunition magazine exploded and instantly ended the life of 1,000 sailors. And so for all the bravery and heroism for our way of life, I hope that we remember all of our veterans in what we do tonight. The second item is to yet again congratulate Big Dave and the Dunsmere Rotary. I read the article, Little Libraries, Not Siskiyou Landscape. And I've actually seen the installation outside City Hall. And I saw a tourist use our little library. That's a very good thing.
Yay!
The third thing is to announce, I'm on full disclosure, I'm on the advisory committee to the Dunsmere Community Resource Center. We're very proud of the progress that's being made across the street in the Dunsmere Community Garden. We wanted to approximately double the amount of beds we had from 18 to 30. And this year, we aspire to install an irrigation system. As any of you that read the paper know, we were successful. We applied to the Connaught Foundation for a grant and we were awarded $12,000 to do those two projects.
Hey!
So, great.
Madam Mayor, on the back of Peter, I'd like to commend you and the Resource Center, the Rotary. They put on a community barbecue, top notch. I don't know if you noticed it, but that doghouse was, ooh! There were a lot of kids jumping and it rained 20 minutes before like God was crying on us and it stopped. And everybody still went up and had a good time. Steak sandwiches, hot dog, barbecue. Good job!
Alright, thank you. So I'll take this moment to a couple of updates similar to the Moss Creek Falls Trail. There has been a good discussion between the, my understanding so far and how they've been is there's been a good discussion between the Union Pacific and the Trail Association. They are amicable to the project, which includes a bridge and a trail over on the UP side of the river. One of the things that is being discussed is a safety wall or a safety fencing between the UP line and the trail, which right now is going to be a pretty extensive build and triggers a certain level of environmental review under California laws. So we're kind of talking about how we can work better about that aspect. But as far as, as it's going forward in discussions that I've heard is that UP is in favor of putting the route in. They understand it is difficult and it is a danger. We're just working on the specifics of what that's going to look like. And so hopefully that will move forward here in the next couple of months. We have, Big Dave and I reached out to Tom Hestleton about presenting his final proposal to the city of Dunsmere. But the Trail Association would like to get UP confirmation before they do that. So hopefully UP and the Trail Association can come to an agreement. And then we can hopefully see that project come through here and have a safe route to Moss Creek Falls. Because there were a lot of people looking more at it even who went, quite a few people that came up even to the northern part of Dunsmere. So hopefully that will happen.
Amen.
Yeah.
Well, once the project's done, I expect we will host an extremely large party.
Oh, yeah. I think a lot of people will be very happy for the, for the ending of that saga.
Madam Mayor, while we're on the subject, I know every time this comes up, I'd like to kind of poke and put this back into the conversation. But as we're moving towards a sense of public buildings and facilities, we do have to start planning for parking and that type of thing. So imagining that right now, Hitchcock Falls and we, Quail Brook or whatever, we're going to need places to park them. So I just want to keep putting that into the long stream there.
And my understanding is Councilmember Chrysler and Councilmember Art have put something together for us to consider today.
Thank you.
So moving forward, the conversation about animal control and home enforcement continues. We are having that conversation. I know the finance committee is working very hard to appropriate the adequate funds for that type of position. The Human Society located in Mount Shasta is willing to discuss some solutions with us as well. So we are moving forward with conversations with that. And hopefully there can be some information coming on our budget to appropriate the funds for a full time or half time.
Even parts.
Yeah. Car, car time or full time, co-enforcement, animal control. So we're, we're continuing that conversation and all of the players are at the table for that. Other than that, I just want to say that June is Pride Month. And so I would like to wish the city of Dunsmere a very good Pride Month. As a member of the LGBTQ community, it's really great to have a position where I am a little bit visible. This is probably a little too personal. But you know, to everybody out there, because from that community, who isn't from that community, there, there's been a lot of really great progress in acceptance and a lot of progress in understanding for that community. So hopefully everybody can enjoy their Pride Month in a safe, responsible manner. So thank you for the moment. We will now move to staff comments. Your city manager? Nope?
We're recording.
We're good? Okay. We'll now move on to item number six, which is approval of our minutes.
I take a motion to approve the minutes from vote April 4, 2019, May 16, 2019, and May 20, 2019, specially.
Alright, is there any amendments to any of the minutes for those three meetings?
No, only compliments to the note taken. Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
Well, let's do some applause.
Yay! Julie! We're going to applaud Debbie today, but that's okay. That's a, that's a good problem to have. Alright, seeing no amendments to those minutes, is there a second to the motion?
I'm second.
There's a second. So there's a motion on the table to approve items 6A, B, and C, which approves the regular meeting minutes for April 4th, May 16th, and May 20th of 2019. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. Our minutes are approved. Thank you, Aunt Julie. We'll now move on to item number seven, which is the consent agenda discussion.
Well, I simply confess I missed the first two meetings, the first two minutes of tonight's meeting. But I did note that the header for tonight's agenda says closed session nine. And in fact, we do have a closed session item 14.
Thank you. It is a typo, but I believe it was noticed when the closed session had been announced. So I believe we are under Ground Acts compliance. Please correct if you're wrong in that clarification, but I think I have it.
It was really, I know a number of people are interested in the closed session items. I was just arguing for the hot.
My understanding is we are. So just for the public's information, we will be holding a closed session at the end. It is item 14-1, which is public employment appointment for the city manager. So we will be going into closed session to discuss the city manager recruitment process. We did hold some interviews with our finalists this past weekend. So we will be discussing that in closed session. So how that works is we will, we will close the public audience for that closed session. And then when we're done, we will reconvene. And if you do want to sit around and wait till the end of that, you agree to do that. And then we will adjourn for tonight. So, thank you for that, for that item. So moving back into our consent agenda, so consent, consent agenda tonight, we have a approval closure in use of Screw Street between Dunsmere Avenue and Shasta Avenue each Thursday between 2:00 and 8:00 PM from July 11 through September 26 from the Dunsmere Farmer's Market. Item B, receive and file letter of support from State Waterboard Resource Control Board in support of Dunsmere request for financial assistance for the project from Prop 50 Chapter 6C funds. Item number, or item letter C, approve a closure of Screw Street from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM for Rotary breakfast on June 8, 2019 as part of Railroad Days. Item D, authorize mayor to execute letter of support for Assembly Bill 626 adding clarifying language to Government Code Section 1090 relative to public agencies' use of professional consultants. Letter E, authorize city manager to approve two days alcohol sales license for Chamber of Commerce for June 8 through June 9 of 2019 for Railroad Days. Letter F, approve closure of city parking lots June 7 through June 10, use of Children's Park June 8 and June 9. Closure of Prime Street, Shasta Avenue to Dunsmere Avenue, June 7 to June 9. Another temporary closures as part of Railroad Days. And letter G, receive notice that Planning Commission approved a parcel map split at its April 10, 2019 meeting for quote "best choice in properties" APN 059-030-010 at 4221 Siskiyou Avenue, in compliance with Dunsmere Municipal Code Section 16.08.070. Is there any discussion?
Well articulated.
You sound like you do this for a living. I was waiting for it.
I still can't say the word municipal. That's a really hard word to get out.
I think a motion to adopt a consent agenda.
Items A through G?
Yes.
A second.
Alright, there's a motion and a second to adopt consent agenda items A through G as is discussed.
What comment and one question?
Sure.
The comment is, under the protocols in the agenda committee, this is exactly what needs to happen. Thank you. We need to make a decision in the interest of the public as to which items of controversy or which are not.
Correct.
Two is for the time honored tradition of the check register appearing in our agenda. What did you guys do with the check register O and G?
Do we have any checks?
Have we spent any money?
We've signed hundreds of them.
Yes, you signed a lot.
I just apparently don't have any registers to approve tonight.
And that can be approved tonight, yes.
I know. That is kind of a very odd submission. That's kind of odd, but thank you. Yeah, if there's anything at any point that is controversial on consent, this would be the time to take it off.
I said nothing.
Alright, great.
Thank you.
So there's a motion on the table and a second. Any other comments on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving consent agendas, items A through G as is, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. Consent is approved. We'll now move into item number eight, public hearings. We have none scheduled at the moment. Moving into item number nine, old business, none scheduled. We will move into item 10, which is new business to item A. Approve memorandum of understanding slash agreement to provide law enforcement services between County of Siskiyou and City of Dunsmere from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Mayor or city manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You have a current three years MOU with Siskiyou County for law enforcement, which is expiring and will in fact expire June 30, 2019. And ad hoc committee met with representatives from the sheriff's office and Siskiyou County, my understanding was several meetings, and discussed extension of the MOU. What is proposed before you right now is an increase in the cost for the service and a reduction in the service hours. The initial request of the county sheriff when negotiations began was substantially higher than your current cost and substantially higher than the amount that the ad hoc committee is recommending before you this evening. What staff is recommending is that you do approve the memorandum of understanding agreement to provide law enforcement services between County of Siskiyou and City of Dunsmere for the next three years and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute.
Thank you. And would the ad hoc committee, Councilmember Chrysler, Ryan, would you like to add anything to that staff report? I believe there is a request for you to continue.
Yes.
Would you like to discuss?
So on a financial note, that is completely correct. It was almost double the hourly rate. And the county has no flexibility with this according to their order. So we see reports here as a reduction in hours from 20, an average of 20 hours per day, to 14.5 roughly. We have assurances from Captain Hama and Sergeant Ben that they will be able to contain the law enforcement standard with the reduced hours. Though it may be difficult communication between city manager and our sergeant here who is going to be key. Not, within this memorandum, there's a lot of opportunity for Dunsmere to have input. And we discussed at great length, even though it's not a change to the memorandum because it's already in there, that we tend to communicate in regular intervals. So the sheriffs requested that we continue that ad hoc committee to negotiate a contract and meet quarterly to discuss the law enforcement needs of Dunsmere. And we recommend that the city council extend the ad hoc committee for that quarterly meeting. The other thing that was promised to us is that when their personnel schedules can handle it, they're a little bit understaffed right now, that in addition to our wonderful police chief here, we'll have a second in command, also experienced sheriff deputy, who will be assigned at Dunsmere for most of his hours. They can't accommodate that right now, but part of this committee would be to communicate at what point they'll be able to implement that in another call.
Thank you. Anything else?
None. Perfect.
Okay. Are there any questions or clarification that the council would like before we move into the public comment? Seeing none?
Can I hear anything?
Yeah.
Just that we're currently working to try to identify who that second person's going to be, but I've got a couple of names and I'm flunking around.
Thank you, Mr. Art. I really appreciate it. I'd just like to thank Ben publicly for everything he's done to this contract. He's committed to improving Dunsmere's law enforcement, not just community care areas. So I appreciate it.
I kind of appreciate the rigmarole. Are you still?
Thank you. Thank you. Wonderful. Alright, we will now open this up for public comment. This is the time for the public to come up and address the item at hand, which is the memorandum of understanding with the law enforcement services. We will have three minutes for public comment. And we do request that you give your name.
Well, then three minutes shouldn't start clock right away.
No, I don't start the clock.
Really?
No, no, I mean you can...
Really? Oh, you're not going to wait?
No, no, I, I allow you to give your name and then I start your three minutes.
Alright, Mario, being 05512 Dunsmere Avenue. Are we ready? Okay, I first got involved in my local city government over my car getting joyride and dealing with the sheriffs. Been involved in the city ever since. Tonight, I was looking for some numbers from Mount Shasta. We all know how we like Mount Shasta comparisons. But the first is, city of Mount Shasta pays $900,000 and change for personnel for dispatch, another 331, community services 78, per grand total of $1,337. They have 230.1 crimes per 100,000. This is from the city of Mount Shasta's current agenda. City of Dunsmere pays 416 for sheriff's contract, zero for its dispatch, and is budgeted right now currently $27,000 for a community services officer, for a total of $443,000. We have 245 for FBI crime statistics from the Mount Shasta website, crimes per 100. I'm not happy with this contract. This is a total mistake. There is no way we were happy with 20 hours a day, but understood it was a financial issue. 14.4, well work. And when the citizens find out this negotiation, we're going to have to look. Nothing is more important than police and fire. And it doesn't really matter how many tourists you bring in if we don't have the police coverage that we're needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments related to the memorandum of understanding that's on the table for law enforcement services? Alright, seeing none, we will now close the public comment portion of this item and move into council discussion. Who would like to leave us off? Councilmember Art?
Well, I don't know. Resident Rubino is just taking a timeout or he's leaving the meeting. But Mario and I served as mayor and vice mayor of this city But Mario and I served as mayor and vice mayor of this city from 2008 to 2010. And it was our painful duty, because the city was in financial crisis, to cut a complete deputy position out of the support we were receiving from the sheriff's office up to then. And we openly worried, what is this going to do to public safety? And we want to hear from the community. Are we cutting fat? Are we cutting meat? What are we cutting? And I've spent countless hours with residents of Dunsmere. Oh, weed has its own police department. Mount Shasta has its own police department. We really need our own police department with not a virtual police chief, but real police chief reporting to us. And for the time I've been in Dunsmere, I am convinced that we are not only ably served, but we are extraordinarily served by the sheriff's department. And we, the City of Dunsmere at this point, cannot afford a police department. So I thank the sheriff's department for their side of the negotiation on behalf of our citizens. I thank the committee for their side of the negotiation because it feels like it's not a commercial transaction. The safety needs, the community are really part of the center.
Thank you.
I intend to go ayes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say in response to council's whole comments that it is of the utmost concern cutting back law enforcement. There's only with closely working with the sheriff's office and discussing that in the next few months from this hour and a change, we'll both, both sides of the city and sheriff's have been monitoring the effects of it, adjustments need to be made. And it could be possible that 14 and a half hours is not enough. And we will welcome a renegotiation if at that point it's determined that it's not enough. But that highlights the difficulty we're in. I'd just like to, for everyone to know that we're currently with this reduced hours, $88,000 deficit in our general fund. Now, there's ways to raise funds. I think we're going to have a good year. But the price raised in the post contract was $144 per year from last year to this year. We can't afford that even with drastic measures. In three years, we will be faced with a similar price gap and we will not have any hours left to cut. So I just want to encourage everyone to brainstorm and begin planning on how we're going to pay for this fundamental service of law enforcement, as well as the many other services we need and desire in Dunsmere. It's part of a bigger conversation. We have time based on the sheriff's department's willingness to work with us and problem solve our situation. But we have three years to foster prosperity and bring in more revenues so we can properly fund our law enforcement.
Council member George.
I'd like to compliment council member Art. I thought I was following along the conversation. I thought we were going to go down one path and you went down the other. I thought you did a good job there explaining. I think that what people need to understand overall is is that when you think you're going to have your own police department, you're locking yourself up in terms of personal benefits for life for everybody that's involved. And in fact, the city, I guess, wasn't too long ago that we finally paid the last of the money out. We haven't stopped yet.
We haven't stopped. We have stopped. Our, over $20,000 in this year's, next year's budget is allocated towards our police department from 20 plus years ago.
So anyway, I also wanted to comment that I believe that when people simply look at numbers of hours, they're missing the point. And the point that I would like to echo is is that I do believe that we're doing excellent service from the sheriff's department. I believe that they care as much as anybody about what happens in this community. And so that's my attitude going forward with this.
Thank you. Council member Kaiser, give me comments.
Well, it's kind of, we want to keep it alive because if he had mentioned that, you know, we could be able to bounce it and take a look at it and we can adjust it if both sides both needs it. It may be a little bit more out of here, a little bit more out of there for certain events or certain times, but at least it's open to, they'll give it if you need. We can kind of adjust it a little bit, right?
Yes. And to be clear, on an operational standpoint, you call 911, there's always an officer who's able to respond at some point. It has to do with the number of hours patrolling here will go down.
Thank you. That was actually a nice question to clarify for the general public. You will still have 24/7 law enforcement access.
Absolutely.
You just may not have been, you know, two blocks away from your front door. Because that was a concern that was voiced to me.
Can I put it to you in a way that we kind of, we put it to them? What we're looking for is, we want Andy sitting in the sheriff's station pretty much throughout the day. We want invisible. We want people to see us, our town sheriff, you know, and that's, and then what we're hoping to get is Barney on the weekends. So we have that second cut. So that's might not be the proper way. Like he said, we don't want to tell the other officer we're going to call him Barney. But, but that's kind of what we were looking for. That's kind of what we came to conclusion. I think it's a great for, for what this dude, we squeezed blood out of a grape, I'm telling you. It was, and I think it's a good deal for what we got.
I know it is a huge concern for everyone and I think this partnered with, thank you, well, you. I think this partnered with the efforts that have really, the residents have kind of latched onto the neighborhood watch and really pushing forward with that, the disaster planning advisory committee, chief of DIA, the work he's doing there. I think there's definitely some overlaps where, you know, as neighbors, we do need to also watch over our neighborhoods and call people, call the sheriff's office if something is happening that we think is inappropriate, you know, illegal activity and things like that. One of the comments that was brought up that I would like to just cover really quick is there was an email from a resident about enforcing curfew of the parks, which I believe is different from the curfew of the general public, that the parks close at 9:00 PM. And there was a request to have that inserted into the agreement or discussed as far as if the sheriff's office would be open to checking those parks and making sure people weren't there overnight. Is that something that was discussed or?
That wasn't discussed because it wasn't brought to our attention like this at that time. Nor in time to be.
Yeah, but it's, it fits into the restructuring, which is we're having the committee commit to open communication. And clearly, the police chief and city manager communicate daily. But the open communication to change things. So to have this language changed, I was given a 90-day estimate, I'm giving it through the county, to get any of the language changed. So we weren't in a situation to change a lot of the language. And it's a well-written vague memorandum of understanding. So this input and collaborative relationship is already built into the language. So something like that, it's already in there. Now explicitly, you shall enforce that. The city shall direct and.
Yeah. I think I just wanted to bring it up as an example of certain things that may change. You know, the other thing that I've heard is some people who want to see more enforcement of bicycle laws in the streets. They're making sure people are wearing helmets, they're obeying the traffic laws. Because when you're a bike in the road, you still have to stop at a stop sign, which some cyclists do not, which scares the living daylight out of you if you're a car and you almost scream them at 9:30 at night. Not like that happened to me in particular. So that's another thing that has been brought up about, you know, maybe more things, seeing what the needs of the city are.
Yeah, and this committee continuing is going to be a better vehicle for any concerns of these emails. If they come to the city, they should be forwarded to this committee that's communicating with the sheriff. I think that the sheriff's department is very open to criticism of law enforcement on their generally, not specifically of this neighbor's house. But I would like to see more of this. They want that input. And we're trying to create that vehicle through this committee.
Thank you. Is there a thought of bringing in other types of resources, like the Community Resource Center to discuss? Because crime isn't just about enforcement. It's about looking at the root of the problem. Has there been a bigger, broader conversation of bringing in some of these social services to address maybe some of the drug issues that are going on? You know, just busting someone for meth isn't necessarily treating the issue itself. There might be social services.
I remember, first we had to bring it to the table and make up a partner and a player. Before we can bring in, we need to establish a relationship with them first. Then we can start getting like, you know, stepsisters or stepbrothers. Just knowing this man at Sheriff Hopey personally, I guarantee you they're not going to have any problem if not help us finding those outreach and resources. So I cannot say yes, but I guarantee you that they would be favorable.
Well, actually, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I can just remember the community care team that is being sponsored by the resource center does do that. In fact, on a regular basis, Sheriff Hopey does show up. So that is a venue where that can be addressed.
But it has nothing to do with this contract.
Yeah.
Well, we also discussed their willingness to cooperate with community police and people they call. But involvement within our high school, our middle school, you know, gear program. But what we're asking for was, these two people that are our officers here, our children go to school in Dunsmere, know them by first name. Our business owners see them walk the streets and say, hi, hey, how was your weekend? Go, well, are there any concerns about security or pedestrians? So we did discuss it all. And it kind of all came down to, you know, the technical terms that we're moving forward with. But both sides committed to further communication on more legislative issues.
Sorry? Thank you. Council member Art?
Well, I simply, I mean, I spent all my time trying to curry favor with the chair of the finance committee. Because even before Officer Westine talked to us about the dog bite problem, I feel strongly that we need a full-time protocolist officer. And I think the finance committee, whatever the staff does, the finance committee can present to this council a fully funded position for a code enforcement officer starting July 1 of this year. And I think it will be a forceful part. I think for the community we're trying to serve. There does need to be a diversion around drug problems, but there also needs to be an integration of the community policing concept. And I think we're well poised to relive for a smaller community.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or is there a motion that anyone would like to make?
I'm happy to move the contract.
All right. So there's a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding as it's stated on page 35. So just for the general public, there's a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding slash agreement to provide law enforcement services between the County of Siskiyou and City of Dunsmere from July 1, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, and authorize mayor and city manager to execute. Is there a second?
I would second that.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion of the motion at hand?
No.
Seeing none. All those in favor?
That's a roll call.
No.
This one's a roll call.
All right, we will now move into a roll call vote. Council member Deutsch?
Aye.
Council member Brian?
Aye.
Council member Kaiser?
Aye.
Council member Art?
Aye.
And myself, I'm an aye. Motion carries. The memorandum is adopted. I would like to myself make a motion to continue the ad hoc with the appointment of council member Kaiser and council member Brian to continue the work and monitoring of the memorandum of understanding.
I'll second that. There you go.
There's a second. All right. All those in favor of motioning to continue the ad hoc with the appointment of council member Kaiser and Brian to further the MOU?
This could be a standing committee?
This is ad hoc.
It would just be an ad hoc because it would be two councilmembers.
Every court, every court wants to come back to you.
I've been trying to get the term, a year, two years.
Duration of the contract, a year.
And the reason is, is again, if we decided not to have a public safety committee or we do have a public safety committee.
Well, this could be called public safety, but it would not be a public committee for public safety.
Correct.
So my understanding is the purpose of this ad hoc would be to continue the monitoring of the memorandum of understanding for as long as it's held. So it would be for the duration of this. There may be need to, there may be a need to reappoint or appoint different individuals as our elections come and go. But as it sits right now, it would be a motion to continue the ad hoc.
Got it.
Just to do the memorandum.
Second.
And there's a second over here. So any other conversation? None. All those in favor of continuing the ad hoc with council member Kaiser and Brian to monitor the memorandum of understanding for the duration? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good job, Ben.
We'll now move on to our next item of business, which is 10B, which is receive report on previous uses of transaction and use proceeds and request for direction regarding processing 2019 2020 money requests.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. There's some confusion on part of this staff person as to how the transaction and use tax proceeds have been utilized, processed, accounted for in the past. So what we, staff has provided is a list of what the requests were, a understanding of how the money is collected. It was voted to people that established this tax on themselves. And what we're asking for this time is a designation from the council as to whether the council wishes to receive and act on the requests for allocations generally through this process. Again, it's a general fund allocation. So it's back to community promotions that we're talking about allocations from this in the future, not from TUT as a fund. Or whether you wish to return this to the finance committee, which apparently did this process last budget cycle. So that's all we're asking at this moment in time. Not that you hear the applications, not that you make a decision at this time. Just how do you wish to proceed to process the applications that have already been received?
So just to clarify, your preferred, do you have a preferred recommendation? Sorry?
Yeah, I had a staff recommendation four years ago, but it got ignored then, so I'm not going to make it again.
Okay. So my understanding is either the city council as a whole may hear all of the proposals and decide within those, or we may defer that to finance committee as an advisory role and then we would just get their final list.
They would recommend back to the council or provide their list of recommendations, which the council could modify and or adopt however it would choose.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions for staff related to the staff report? Seeing none, we'll move into public comment. Is there any public comment on how we deal with the TUT requests, TUT? Seeing none, we will close public comment and enter into discussion. Council member Roy.
Just as far as process goes, last year I was very disappointed in the fact that because it was made by the finance committee, a different finance committee, but the finance committee at the time, that by the time it got to the council, it was who are you going to take away from if you want to give it to somebody else? And it became a zero-sum game. And at the time, what I was concerned about was money that we were looking to give to the resource center, down to resource center. And so I think that, you know, in terms of the larger picture, we need to decide how we're going to address this as far as where the money goes. But I do think it should be something where we work it out together and not as a separate group that then has the ability to lock things into place.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, how would we do that?
Council member Kaiser.
I mean, I'm all for it if I'm with you. But how can we do it?
Well, I feel that the finance committee doesn't need to do this process. We would simply say a time for council in sense. But you know, part of the recommendation the finance committee wasn't written here, but that we named it to better represent what legally is. TUT is a tax that goes into the general fund. So the expenditure of money raised that goes into the general fund has to be equally weighed against all the general needs of the city. There's nothing wrong with issuing grants or funding community promotion projects. But it has no legal connection with the TUT. Has a tradition of that because these grant programs or these fundings, they accelerated after the passage of it. And I know it was tied to it for particular reasons in the conversations that took place at that time. But I think that just to better clarify, you know, we should be proud to issue, you know, allocations of funding for valuable community projects. But understand that it's community resource that comes from the general fund. So in light of that, the finance committee has a great deal of things to do with the general fund and weighing against all the options and the benefit, cost benefit analysis. So a recommendation from the finance committee, it doesn't, you know, only half really suits it. Because it's an expenditure of general fund dollars, it's appropriate for finance committee. Because it's a project, you know, we're funding particular community promotions. It's the city council's domain because it's all inclusive, every aspect of it. So regardless of whether we keep it or the Finance Committee do the initial screening and test, we should make it an automatic process, it's the same for everyone. There shouldn't be a follow-up. You know, if you had it last year, you should have maybe a second page to fill out as to how you use the funds. And we should have some sort of cost benefit analysis with the understanding that we don't have infinite funds to give. We need to give to the most valuable promotions or, you know, we need to promote the most valuable projects within our community. So either way, a value or beneficial. Beneficial.
Okay.
It has a value on one side if you bring in more money. The other side, of course, would be beneficial to all of our citizens. Both are a great concern, but I just think we need a standard process that's the same for everyone. It's known, I'm happy to have the Finance Committee do that. But if they do not, I think we should hold the city council's process to the same standard.
Councilmember, is this in response to Councilmember Bryan or do you have any comments?
No, it's a follow-up question. I think the question has been, how would we go about doing it? And whether it's done by the Finance Committee, whatever. I think that each one of us can look at this list and decide as a council member representing our community, what we think our values are. And the way that we could translate that into some process would be that we get the list, we know what the numbers are, in a council meeting, each of us close, how would we do it? And sit down and submit what they would give and then work out mathematically how that balances out in terms of how much we have and how much we give. But I think there should be a process where each person could say, this is something important to me and I want to make sure I can support it. And then maybe it doesn't get supported, but at least we have that option.
Well, I completely agree, Councilmember Roy. Except for the fact that it isn't a separate fund to be distributed. It's the general fund, which is currently negative eighty-eight thousand. So what we're going to distribute negative eighty-eight thousand is a very different question that has a lot of nuances to where the city spends its funds best for its future prosperity and ability to function in its most basic needs. You know, go back to that law enforcement, investment in things that do generate income is going to be crucial in the next three years. So this is a big conversation to have and where it's processed isn't so much of great importance to me. And the Finance Committee could do it, I recommended that as a member of the committee there. But I do think we need to name it correctly and frame it in our minds as the correct question.
And in fairness, we do have an item to rename it later in this discussion. Councilmember Kaiser, you have a comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Bruce, let me see if I can summarize what two of you just said. Just going to go to the Finance Committee, you guys are going to evaluate. And the ones, pretty much the ones that pass the test there are going to come to the council. And we can take a look at that work, as Bruce says, we can individually score in some way, put it together. And then as a council, we cohesively decide who's going to get what.
But if you start off, I'll start from there, but if you start off with the idea that the Finance Committee gives you something and then if you're going to make a change to it, you have to come up with taking some money away from someplace, then automatically what they have is going to be very persuasive. Last year, when it come down to it, I'd been talking with Stephen Bryan about what we were going to do for the Community Resource Center. When the time came, it was just put it front end, there was nothing there. What are we going to do? Can't do anything. Where are you going to take it from? And I was locked out. I don't want to do that again.
But what is your result?
What I'm saying is that instead of going with an early committee, we get the paper, we work out a process among ourselves where we come up with a way of evaluating and then we can come up with a balance. To talk to the point though of, we have a situation where some of these programs are essential. For instance, the concept of the Chamber of Commerce, fifteen thousand dollars. Well, we can't afford that. What that is, is advertising. You know, and if all you say is, well, the chamber should take care of itself, okay. But do you know that we're going to cut back on fifteen thousand dollars in advertising? Which is, and those are the kind of things that if you're simply doing it in a committee, you don't get a chance to get out. So I'll leave it at that, I'm passionate about it. But I just think we should work out and not simply say, we're just going to have a budget crisis right now and nobody gets any money because we have to be frugal. Because I think that could do some serious damage to programs and the care of them.
So I'm going to just take a breather. Councilmember Art, do you have any comment to give for the conversation?
Well, I do. And as a member of the Finance Committee, I do support the course of action that this needs committee level attention on two fronts. The first front is the voters and the taxpayers said okay to this tax on the notion that city government would save our library, which was defunded by the county, our community pool, which is the tradition forever. The good news is the TUT is producing a lot of revenue. We have, in a sense, an embarrassment of riches. I'm looking at Councilmember Kaiser, we have twenty-five thousand dollars in the new budget for the Park and Rec District to keep the pool open. But I have no confidence whatsoever that that's the right number. I don't want to do, again, next summer or the summer after, we can't open the pool because the pool is broken. So we need to have, in my view, where I'm used to from the California Legislature, a Finance Committee where all applicants with the detail deemed appropriate by the city make their application for this increasing pool of tax dollars. And the first stop is in the Finance Committee. But if for whatever reason your cause does not prevail, you get a second shot when the city adopts its budget for the year. In essence, you left us out. We got screwed. But we've become far more transparent from the Finance Committee that was closed to the public and had no process. You fill out a one-page application and ask for half the much money you want. I think the General Finance Committee wants to move beyond that to a fairer, more transparent. Everybody's assured that we're getting the biggest bang for the tax bucks. And I support that as well.
Really quick, I appreciate the interest in the item, but it is really difficult to focus on the conversations up here when we have the voice of the audience talking and your voice is carried to the front. So I please ask that if you're in the audience and you have a outside conversation, to please step out of the room. It is very hard for me to focus on other people up here. So thank you, Councilmember Art, for that. Is there any other discussion on the item?
One last thing. So if we do get to that point after the Finance Committee comes, will I be told that if I want to put something in that isn't in, I've got to come up with cutting something else?
Well, no, to be clear, the process hasn't been fully adopted by the city council yet. So my vision of it would be the Finance Committee prepares a proposal for how to process these applicants. Same process for everyone.
They're actually need to stay process for.
Yeah, with staff and the Finance Committee will prepare that argument and process. City Council will adopt the process and maybe make changes to the process as it seems fit. It's not, this is to have more time to discuss these in detail with the full ratification of all the financial movements of the city. That's the only benefit to the Finance Committee doing it. Conversely, we could create a whole nother committee to handle it. You know, the committee that handles the Dunsmere community project grants. But we already have a great many committees, and that committee would have to have detailed knowledge of our finances to understand one important aspect of it. So that's kind of the basis of it. There would be room, we can make the process such if we chose to. The council could decide that the Finance Committee doesn't eliminate, it just prioritizes based on available funds. And everyone who applied should certainly be before the city council. There should be no one who applied to the city council that didn't know that it, I mean, I go with that.
So there's, so the discussion right now is not the individual contributions that people may get, but it's a decision on if the full council would like to hear it or if we would like to defer to the standing committee. So.
Well, just one response, Bruce, I agree with everything you said. The process before didn't pass the appearance test or the reality test. But what you notice as the TUT produces, the TUT is going to produce a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in estimated revenue for the new fiscal year. And the sum of the assets, we said yes to every single one of them, were eighty-four thousand dollars. What the Chair keeps emphasizing is we've got a general fund deficit. What does the overall thing look like? And I think that's under the council.
Absolutely.
I agree.
So having a robust conversation, is there a motion for either to institute the full council as the hearing body or is there a motion to support deferring the hearing body to the Finance Committee?
I move that the Finance Committee come up with a draft process and present it to the council so that we can all decide on it.
For sure.
So essentially, no, I.
Okay, but I don't understand the question.
We're talking process, we're not talking who pays what.
This is, these days, not the way it was.
And to be clear, another recommendation that is pending in the Finance Committee is putting off these allocations till after the main budget is dealt with because we want that process in place before these funds are given out. So you can begin this year, not next year.
For sure.
So it's not, it'll take some more time perhaps on it, but you'd just be deferring it to us to come up with a process. And we wouldn't be doing that talk until the budget's passed.
Hey, Casey, when we find ourselves sitting up here in that one moment and we realize that we lost that power and that somebody got beat to death.
No, and I don't think that's what's before, seeing none.
I apologize for interrupting. What I think for my clarity, which is difficult. What I'm hearing is members want a process before the Finance Committee, but members also want a second process before the city council. That is what is being proposed, as I understand, by the Finance Committee.
Correct.
So they would conduct a public hearing where they're going to take all the input from the applicants. They're going to weigh that, they're going to then make a recommendation to the council where there will be an additional public hearing before the city council where all the applicants have the opportunity to present all their information. Then the council decides. The council may or may not decide to go with the Finance Committee recommendation or, you know,
Yes.
what it does at that point.
Yes.
Okay.
What he said.
We just elaborated that the Finance Committee is working out that process. And I have that motion, so if you want to say.
Okay, I second it.
All right, so there's a motion to direct the Finance Committee to draft a process for accepting the proposed community promotion funding, whether we name that or not in I E. So it is a charge to them to draft that process and bring it back to the council. That's the motion on table.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Kaiser, have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the charge that the Finance Committee draft a process for which they will devalue allocations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Finance Committee is charged them back. All right.
Good work, everybody.
Fun. That's just my choice. All right, we'll move on to item number ten C. Approval of agreement and authorization for city manager to execute emergency facilities and land use agreement for use of mock airport by the United States Department of Agriculture Forest Service. City Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Every fire season, the Forestry Service has, from time to time, positioned a helicopter at the airport. The helicopter is not necessarily fighting fires, it's not necessarily involved in suppression of fires in any way. It's there essentially to be available if something happens and it's needed. So it's a backup position. As such, then it parks adjacent to the runway. Those who have airplanes at the airport are still able to access the apron, the runway, and do what they do while the helicopter is there. We get two hundred dollars a day. If for some reason they add a additional helicopter, actually two additional helicopters, and go to three helicopters at the airport, at which time you're pretty much restricting the use of the airport by anybody else, it's three hundred dollars a day. If they call and actually ask us to close the airport so that their operations are the only operation going, we get seven hundred and fifty dollars a day. This is the agreement that was in effect the last couple of years, these numbers. Prior to that, as you may recall, those who've been on the council for a while, we were getting as little as seventy dollars a day when they essentially interrupt services at the airport. So there were some substantial negotiations by prior staff to get it up to two hundred dollars a day. The reason we don't get as much as other airports that they have a contract with is we do not provide the services and make them available to them like other airports do. We do not have a water supply so that they could actually fight fires by filling up their equipment at the airport. And there are other things that, you know, gasoline, we do not provide. So this is a smaller amount than the other airports are getting, but it's also seemingly reasonable. This is the first time they've presented a three-year contract. And the past has always been a one-year-at-a-time contract.
Right, thank you. Are there any questions for staff on the item at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into public comment. Is there any public comment related to the agreement between the USDA Forest Service and City of Dunsmere?
Close.
Agreed. Seeing none, we'll move into council discussion. Is there any council discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to point out one thing, just a piece of information. One of the things that we've been looking at towards getting the airport sustainable is the idea that another airport has suggested to us, and that is that we go out of our way to come up with things that make it enjoyable or at least beautiful for these people to be up there in the hot and doing nothing but sitting all day long. So the idea of coming up with some kind of a pilot's lounge, barbecue pit, basketball things, those are things we're looking at because if they say, I want to go to Dunsmere and hang out there instead of some other place, that's extra money in our pocket every day they're up there. So those are some of the things we do want to look at going forward.
Right, thank you. Is there any other comments on the item at hand? Councilmember Kaiser? Councilmember Art?
Well, I would simply comment, this is a good beginning as we move into climate change and mostly the threat from wildfire. And my observation and comment is this doesn't just benefit the community of Dunsmere, it benefits the communities of the cloud, weed.
South Siskiyou County.
And North Dazhasta.
North Dazhasta. Well, I'm sorry, but I'm South Siskiyou County. No, I would have to comment that we're getting money. We're getting money for the first time, we're getting seventy bucks, now we're getting seven hundred and fifty dollars to pay for all the programs. We're getting money, so it's a start, it's a good start.
All right.
Are we open for a motion?
Go for it.
I move to approve the three-year emergency facilities and land use agreement for use of the mock airport by the USDA Forestry Service and authorize the city manager to execute.
So a second?
I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Kaiser, second by Councilmember Deutsch. Is there any discussion on the motion at camp? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving the agreement?
You.
No, we're not spending money, we're getting it.
Oh, okay, that's just going into a contract, new contract, sorry, sorry.
No, we're not spending any money. All right, all those in favor of approving the three-year emergency facility and land use agreement for use of the mock airport by the USDA Forest Service and authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We have an agreement. I know, you're not used to.
We're not used to getting money.
Yeah, I know. It's okay. All right, we'll move on to item ten D, which is consider and possibly adopt resolution to create the Public Facilities and Services Committee and define committee purposes and parameters. Councilmember Art and Councilmember Kaiser, I believe that you had discussed this item.
The two council members agreed to be part of what is to be a new Brown Act Committee. That was our decision earlier in the year. We met informally and tried to shape what we thought would be priorities for the committee. Once the council approved it, I take full responsibility for drafting the resolution in the agenda packet. I modeled it on the disaster response resolution that the mayor and I worked on. I modeled it on the Finance Committee resolution that we adopted unanimously. But it does indeed include two public members. But it does indeed include two public members. Madam Mayor, I'm indifferent as to whether we just talk about it and adopt it at the next meeting or adopt it tonight, but we do have some high priority issues that the committee needs to work on, including our water quality issues and some other enterprise fund issues, so that's it.
So just to clarify, it said two residents, but it says here three.
I'm sorry.
Okay, just want to clarify that.
And I'm indifferent as to whether it's two or three. It's two for finance?
No, it's five for finance.
Five total for finance.
It's mainly public.
Three, two, because you have the treasurer's odd number.
So I would advise you not to do two residents and two councilmembers because that's an even number and you can't break ties.
This is why I threw it out.
There you go. So...
No fight of ownership, whatever works. And the proposed goals are my own. So, you know, again, I don't want to feel like I'm deceiving anybody, but we adopt the resolution. All councilmember Kaiser and I tried to do was rush out what we thought were high priority issues at the time of our meeting, which was down below.
Are there any questions from the council at this moment? I vote, so you're going to?
I have two comments. Number one, in there you were suggesting that the city manager and city engineer attend these meetings. There really is no city engineer, so to have somebody come from haste to all these meetings would be very expensive, so I would suggest we think about that one.
Could we bump it down to, I don't know what... First, this structure is in the city stamp, but what would be what I would call ahead of public works?
Where there's a public work supervisor, or you could just put in city manager and whatever staff he designates, he or she designates.
That's typically what we do.
For the Finance Committee, we have the city manager and the revenue officer. So to me, it would be the animal, on staff.
Well, you know, depending on the exact agenda of the meeting, you might not want someone from solid waste or sewer versus water, depending on what you're working on, if not both.
Yeah, it would be important.
Which is why I'm thinking if you put city manager and designated staff person by the city manager, it would be the appropriate person.
Yeah, although I think that, I kind of like the element of the scrap that implies that someone would always be there, not just, because if you already have the power to have anyone who's relevant, like your estimation, show up, but make it part of the tradition to have direct input from someone who's responsible for the operations of infrastructure.
I think we're going to talk about sidewalks and streets. We have had that kind of staff secure.
And I guess a general question on the history of how staff is structured here. Have we ever had a manager of, you know, the three enterprises we typically think of here and public works?
No. Now, it's my understanding that there's always been one person who's been streets and sidewalks and storm drains, and then you've had one supervisor for water and sewer.
Each or two guys?
No, two separate teams.
Water and sewer.
One person who had water and sewer, who was called the public utilities supervisor, and then you had a public works person who was called the public works supervisor.
So it goes down to two for that whole round.
That will change significantly with the addition of a grade-three operator. And that organization chart we're working on right now so that we can make a recommendation to...
But it could possibly arrive at the point where someone who's paid more and more qualified could oversee great many things in addition to being a grade-three, is that a possibility?
That's always a possibility. The problem of the moment is the nature of the employees we have. Those who are allowed to work in water, those who are not, those who are allowed to work in wastewater and don't have great licenses. So that's a complication that I'm dealing with at the moment.
Okay.
The other thing I have on here, one of the goals and objectives, like number two, was to negotiate the new waste hauler contract. I'm hoping that that language is not intended to eliminate staff from that process of the negotiations.
No, it was just a worry for us.
It would probably be discussed instead of negotiate, because I believe we defer negotiations first.
Well, that's kind of how we kind of try to light some fires and the things that need to be brought to light.
So to negotiate with staff and recommend a new contract for course of action.
Yeah, anyway, we're getting a little bit into discussion, but there's...
That's not going to my comments.
Okay, is there any other questions at this point?
I kind of got one. Everything's cool, being there, everything's cool, except when we discuss, I told you this before. And this may keep getting rather...
Is it a question or is it a comment? Because one of four new questions are now, we haven't had a public comment yet.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, you can still bring up questions.
Oh, I have to?
There, but anyway, all right. So we're going to close the question section of this. Is there any public comment on the proposed Public Facilities Committee? Seeing none, I will close the public comment discussion. Councilmember Kaiser?
Okay. Page 74, number six. Okay, with me? So that's what it says, including enforcement of the historic district ordinances. We discussed that we can, with recommendations for staffing needs and enforcement options.
Would you remove it?
Well, our hands are tied as far as the enforcement, we can't... We don't have a code enforcement, and you and I both know there's people that we want to well, talk to very sincerely, but I can't hate to do it.
I would be happy to move this out of this document and into the future agenda items.
Okay, cool. If you are willing to omit that, then I'll bash you on this whole thing. That's the only thing I got a problem with that. We can't enforce, okay? And the rest of it, sir, good job.
Councilboard George?
I'd like to say this is a great idea. I look forward to having people that are looking at sidewalks and the other enterprise funds, so I'm looking forward to what you all can do to make the city better through your efforts here.
She's bringing two of us up.
Are there any other comments related to the item at hand?
The only comment I have is that seven, goal seven has some overlap with economic development. So maybe just coordinate during the work twice.
The effort here is the frustration around commercial buildings like the House of Glass, like the Travelers Hotel, like some of the hotels north of town, that rather than throwing rocks at each other, you know, can we actually, as a committee, help to dialogue around the California Theater, around some of the other buildings that for whatever reason are in...
Yeah, I was just commenting that it's expanding the concept of infrastructure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with seven, just because if you go to the goals that you stated in this committee, it's dealing with city infrastructure, existing city infrastructure and planning for new replacement facilities and services. So if you're dealing with city infrastructure, why are you getting into abandoned and vacant commercial buildings?
Happy to drop them.
I think, I would be against number seven, just because that's turning into city staff job.
Well, we were kind of...
And I understand what you're trying to do.
We want to push them and see if there's some kind of incentives that we could offer, acquire, come up with.
Well, I think that's...
And we can do that now.
Well, we would just kind of want to be, you know, deciding how are you, what can we do to help you? Keep them a little pushed along, no one able here to help you, what can we do to...
And I think going to councilmember Brian's comment, that's kind of what the Economic Development Committee is set up to do, is their goal is to encourage existing and new businesses through the community. And I think that's maybe much...
Well, somebody's doing it.
Well, we don't... What we found in the Finance Committee that means every single week is you'll see a number of recommendations bubbling up to the council. In the general fund and in the enterprise funds, we're going to have a number of these are important issues.
Okay.
So if it doesn't have to be in this thing, the committee will get to them when we get to it.
So scratch, no, we scratched.
I swore that I did.
Okay.
I have an issue.
Oh, for God's sake.
No. I have a difficulty supporting the committee, and it's not from the work you want to do. I think it's great. I feel as though this committee is really bleeding into the purpose of staff. So, for example, I know we have the, like, we have the words like negotiate, enforce, you know, propose a study of green waste and tree trimming. I mean, that's a very direct action, that's not really a goal you're supposed to be achieving. I mean, that could maybe be reworded to be, the goal is to investigate green waste, tree trimming, and recycling programs. That would be the goal, and how that could be worded, but I think a lot of this is sounding like city staff member work.
Well, I think if you just reword it, it might come across a little better, like even the very first goal, which I think is, I mean, the most crucial element of this committee would be, you know, five years is the number of time, and another rate study is always in the works. We're going to be moving forward with that important task, but it's an assistant implementation of any budget rate study? That's not really something a committee could do in the direct implementation, but monitor or observe implementation and make recommendations concerning it.
Well, I wrote this as a member of the committee that sat for half a year, and, you know, everybody's following their paper from the pace process, that there are probably seven conditions for instance. It's the official city policy to get rid of like 30 rate schedules that make no sense.
Yeah, but that's our job, is what I'm saying.
Whose job is it?
It's city staff's job.
And how do we make sure this does?
We have a city manager who communicates with us.
But again, without getting into too many topics, there's no plan of action, there's no assurance that the commitments we made in raising rates will actually be done.
And I think that's our job to stay on top of it and say, what are the steps we're taking, city manager? And the city manager with pace do the work to do this. The other thing that's a huge red flag for me is saying, including the hiring of a qualified waste plant operator, it is not our jobs as a standing committee to hire a staff member under the city manager. I think that's the job of city staff to do that. I'm just, and I don't know if it's necessarily, I'm not, I think for me, I have issues with the proposed goals and not necessarily the committee at this point. I think if the committee is going to add value to the work that staff is doing, then I support it. But as it sits right now, I think it would just be muddying the waters and having councilmembers who are not trained to do very specific topics that we pay city staff to do currently.
But, you know, one of the important aspects of the second committee's, I thought, to be in this beginning of the Finance Committee, I think we're going to grow it into a good institution for Dunsmere where the committee members are being educated on what's going on in the city by the staff who are paid to run the city. And that knowledge is very important because five committee members, two of the city councilors, go out amongst public constituents, their friends, their family, and converse on what the real problems are. Why the sidewalks are starting to be repaired but not fast enough? Why we are where we're at and where we're going? So I think that that's a very important function within the community that the committee serves. So if we were to reword the goals and kind of keeping sure that recommendation is all you can do. If you don't take action, the only action you can take is to recommend. Just kind of word it that way, I think we could probably move some of these goals to sound more... I don't know what you think.
Yeah, I'm more than happy for a committee that promises things off to staff and assists them. I'm just very sensitive, and again, I'm a staff member in a different city, and so I'm very sensitive to not undermining staff doing their job.
And that's the point.
Yeah.
Excellent discussion, at least on this side of the ideas, because the reality is Dunsmere has no code enforcement officer and we have no full-time city planner. So it would make complete sense, as a professional city planner, that you would push back against, at least what I'm trying to do, and I think what councilmember Brian is mentioning is how do we deal with being collectively responsible for ruining the law?
And I think it's a great thing, I think as councilmember, we can continue to ask the question, and you're very good at asking the questions. I think for me, I would like to, I would be supportive of approving the committee tonight, but I would like more staff input into the help that they need as far as what this committee would be doing. And one of the things that we had talked about this committee doing that I didn't see in here is, you know, public facilities like parking lots or moss gray walls, that's not in here. Maybe that is a more perfect goal. So I think I would, my personal stance is that I would be supportive of approving this with a caveat that these are not the goals that are adopted right now.
Let's bring it back, any way you want to do this, go ahead with us.
So...
We're joined, we'll bring it, we'll bring it back.
I move we table it till the committee has a chance to come back and give us a secondary take on this.
I would second that myself. So there's a motion to table the option until the committee can evaluate the goals and proposal further. I would strongly support that you mark the city staff and see what's actually needed as far as back and forth personally, but I will second that. Is there any discussion on the motion at hand to table? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of tabling item 10D until the proposed two committee, councilmember Kaiser and councilmember Arf, bring back a new proposal, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. So we move into item number 10E, which is discuss Finance Committee recommendation regarding community promotion funding. City staff or councilmember Brian, and I believe councilmember Brian, you brought this up a couple times. I don't know if this is pretty much, you want to...
No, I think to just have the, you know, if you approach the concept of TUT grants without knowing the history behind it, it can be quite confusing because some people treat it as if it's a separate way of raising money dedicated to particular ways of spending. And the reality is, as we discussed, that it's a general fund that the citizens of Dunsmere chose to, the general fund tax chose to impose on all sales to the city of Dunsmere for the purpose of, legally, officially, for the purpose of generating revenues for the general fund and all the needs of the city and the community. I'm not proposing that we have any symbolic difference there, just to make it easier for people to understand the true nature of it. And I think community promotions is what it is, and we should be proud of our choosing to fund the promotion of our community in that way. And that's what it was actually named from the beginning. We've just been calling it TUT all this time and kind of led into how many discussions.
So is there any questions on what's being requested of council at this point? Seeing none, we'll move into public comment. Is there any public comment on the naming of the fund which grants out monies to organizations in different classes? And we just asked that you state your name and number.
Carolyn Rivard, 55, 26 Dunsmere Avenue, number 15. I guess I'm confused. You're saying that the TUT monies was already named Community Promotion Funding?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So to me, if you give it that name, that's not general fund, that's got a name. So why does that money not go into its own fund instead of the general fund? That's my question.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment related to renaming the fund which grants out monies to, or at least the process which grants out funds to community promotion funding?
I'd just like to clarify that...
So just really quick, any other public comment? Seeing none, all right, we move into discussion, councilmember Brian.
All right, I'd like to clarify, it's a great question. It's not as if it's one fund that has a certain amount of money allocated to it to do that. It is the general fund, the concept, not the fund, is what we're naming. This idea of granting money for valuable things, beneficial projects within the community is just a concept we're naming, it is not a fund. I think if our finest director works at the end, it's elaborate.
And just as a slight further clarification, because everything that was just said was absolutely correct. Prior to the transaction and use tax... Prior to the transaction and use tax being passed, there was a expenditure account in the general fund budget for community promotions. And the council, back in those years, would allocate on an annual basis when they adopted the budget, based on requests they had received out of the general fund. And what I'm understanding is that members of the Finance Committee want to go back to that process, so that the TUT, when received, goes into its revenue account, which is the general fund. And then if the council wishes to make allocations out of the general fund account, pardon, I'm sorry, community promotions account, which already existed, it would do it that way. There is no tying the revenue source to the expenditure. That's it. And by law, the city is required to do that way. We may not deposit the proceeds of TUT into other than a general fund.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan.
And just to answer Carolyn a little more directly, the fact that they didn't get two-thirds vote, it was not a special fund, so that means that it does need to go into the general fund, and because of the fact that they tried to do that and failed, both times they got less than two-thirds of the vote, it means that it does go into the general fund, and then after that, we as a council decide what to do with it.
Now, just for clarification, basically, we could collect TUT.
And because of the fact that they tried to do that and failed, and then after that, we as a.
Now, just for. Could collect TUT.
And because of the fact that they tried to do that and failed, and then after that, we as a.
Now, just for. Could collect TUT.
And because of the fact that they tried to do that and failed, and then after that, we as a.
Now, just for. Could collect TUT.
And because of the fact that they.
Now, just for.
And because of the fact that they.
They look at their phone, and so what happened was the county closed Old Stage Road. So boom, we can get ahold of whoever, and they can say, oh, the route's closed. One car drops down with their phone, and it now shows it as an open route again. So then all the public goes in that direction. So it's instant, as soon as one phone goes down that road, it opens it back up again. So we were posting flaggers on Interstate 5. We can neither stop someone from going on a public road, but we were screening them, or we were trying to discourage the traffic to stay on the freeway, and we were trying to do things. CHP kicked us off one day because we violated someone's constitutional rights, but that was a whole nother thing, but that was our, we can't do, we can't physically do work on county property, but we can do anything we can, we can do on the ramps, we can try to put flaggers, we can sign, stuff like that, that's what we're trying to do.
That whole issue with Mont Road, Laxo, was mainly my game to this meeting. And now hearing from you guys, that it was primarily the county.
We don't close, we don't close county roads.
That's part of that. The big issue that I had with it was the inconsistency, in the sense that, you know, they closed the road, but, you know, word got around pretty quick that if you were a local, you could go ahead and use the road, unless you ran into someone official that that day decided that you couldn't use the road.
I do like to say something, because I work in outreach, and I like to present something for our perspective. So when people from Old Stage Road called us, they could care less about you living in Dunsmere, the truck drivers who are also taxpayers and that also contribute to the economy and have rights, and then the people living in Old Stage and the people in Mount Shasta. And our obligation as an agency is to find a way that works for everybody, because if we weren't just to please and make the Old Stage residents happy, then we're not doing a service to you, and we're not a service to truck drivers and all the people. So that is, that is not, and you guys, if you want to elaborate on this.
The county came under very intense, you've raised your hand three times, so it's gonna be your turn now.
I did four, so I'm going third.
Oh, wait, it's okay.
The county came under very intense political pressure from citizens in South County, because particularly from people that live along, down in Cantara Loop, right? You guys know where South Old Stage dumps out there, and they're trying to find a way back to I-5, coming out of Cantara Loop or South Old Stage, turn there, Azalea, and trying to figure out where they are. They got no idea where they're going, no business there, they're on their way to Seattle or something, they're just looking at their screen, right? Huge problem. And so those people who had cars stacked up in front of their homes and were worried, how do I get out of here if there's a fire or something? They're calling Siskiyou County and saying, what are you doing about this? So that's why the county responded and went down there and closed the road. But that leaves the rest of us who are just gonna try to get from Mont Road to the back way. I'm not going to Seattle, I just wanna get to Mount Shasta.
Yeah, that's a lot of problems, you know, the potholes, you know, I mean, because the county are giving, I know you say it's a couple million dollars on the road out here, maybe they don't mind the asphalt, but they could get out there and do some work on that, because, you know, we really don't have a side road from Dunsmere to Mount Shasta, I mean, you know, Mont Road has just been a piece of junk all these years.
I grew up in Mount Shasta, when I was a kid, I used to drive my National Scout, you know, it was a bad thing, I'm sure it's no better today.
Right, right, but the more traffic it takes, the more potholes it opens up, and I'm worried all that.
And here's something that is a fact for your consideration. As I understand it, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, it's not a matter of paving or covering the asphalt, the road doesn't meet the standards, and the, whatever is around it, it will have to be a major, a major project from the county to make it, and please elaborate on this, because I'm not.
It doesn't need geometrics, right? If it turns too tight, it's too narrow, there's no shoulder width, it doesn't have proper drainage, and the list goes on and on. And so for these reasons, if the county were to go out there and hate it, they've now endorsed a non-standard route, and they embrace that liability. Everybody understands how lawyers work, right?
Yeah, but they couldn't fill it with dirt or something.
It probably needs to be bladed, right?
Something.
And then the hard part.
I can't say, I just wrote down Mont Road down, because I wanted to see how it was to be, so it was terrible, and they had spent some time on the road, and grating it a little bit, filled the pockets. It won't last if there's a lot of traffic. What happened last time was a big risk, or something like this road, some of the babies on, and living at the top of the sale, we were seeing increased traffic, and when Mike and I was walking down, I had a guy stopped, and I thought he pointed directions, and he got out of his car, he's gonna go out. And I ran, and my police car came up and arrested him, and I tried to roll him out, but the whole interface, I mean, I understand the Caltrans, and that's county, but I really want to encourage you to find ways to interface with the county about this, because there are times, like that was the holiday weekend, I think we're seeing a neighbor day, where, you know, the traffic is, I guess, and there's county eyes right there, and that's the screen, and it's moving, they can't be there all the time. And it is, it's our little way to get back and forth, we need to, they can't sit in traffic for three hours.
So to address that, I've already met with Scott Wade, the Public Works Director, I've shown you exactly what you're seeing here today, maybe that's why they're doing improvements to Old Stage. And then also looking to the future, and I'm not sure how long your son's gonna be a sports, but we're gonna do a work on that side too eventually. So we are taking all of our lessons, you know, from this project, all the problems we had, we're already trying to look for additional routes so we can pivot on the next project to alleviate some of these problems, because it could end up super annoying.
Kind of funny, because one of the things I was thinking about was that from the standpoints of the merchants in town, they use those I thought, what everybody writes you down, to merchants, merchants will go, hey, this is great, all the residents go, this is adorable!
And it gets to where there's too many, and nobody stops, because they're just trying to get them through, they don't really wanna stop by anything, they're just trying to through. It's okay to a point, city of Mount Shasta, they haven't been huge critics, and they got a lot of traffic last year.
Oh, go ahead, Tom.
And second is 732 exit, southbound, Siskiyou Avenue. I'll address the Siskiyou Avenue one first. Do you know that you have a sign posted up there that says I-5 Business Loop, almost opposite here on Siskiyou Avenue? Do you know you have a sign up there posted that? And is it posted on Google, whatever, that it is a business loop? If you look at that, particularly the south end, there's a lot of neighbors here that live at south end, it's like a road, a width and a half of street down there. Is there any chance, number one, you can get it not listed as a business loop on I-5 and take that I-5 business sign off of the Siskiyou Avenue, going southbound, it's where the school sign is, slow off for kids? Are you going to post it, no eighteen-wheelers on Siskiyou Avenue from 732 down to the booths? That's two questions. Business loop, I don't wanna see it as a business loop. And secondly, are you gonna post it so eighteen-wheelers don't go through there from, because they're gonna have one hell of a jam on the south end of Siskiyou Avenue? Second question on I-5 is, last eight years, we've had, and you know what, all the way from the eight-hundred-foot bridge all the way to South Weed, we have vehicles that catch on fire. Okay? I have been right in the back of there where Caltrans has their wonderful forest, and all those vehicles need to do is pull off in the weeds and get it started. Happened once last year and once about six years ago. One of the things that I would suggest, those big barriers you have, put them on the right-hand edge so the folks can't drive their burning vehicles up there and start a massive forest fire, you know, like the car fire, a vehicle goes over there, it starts a fire. Then you put the barriers also on the, on the right-hand side of the edge of the freeway so they're not catching the weeds on fire. Have you thought about it? I did see some places where you, when you did some work, you left it out in one of the lanes so the folks couldn't get over there with a burning vehicle. And every year, you know, and as well as I do, you've got burning vehicles, motorhomes, trucks going northbound there, catching, you know, the real estate on the east side of I-5, because they're burning. Have you got any plans, intentions for that?
Well, I'll start with your first question.
Okay, the first question is, get rid of, post it, sign over there, a green one that says I-5 Business Loop, almost close to I-5 here. And second, de-list it as a business loop on any Google, whatever else, and post it so eighteen-wheelers, big trucks, commercial vehicles aren't coming down Siskiyou Avenue. I assume all of you driven it, you know how narrow that south end is.
So really quick, I wanna introduce myself, because I haven't. My name's Nicole Mallory, and I'm the resident engineer on the project, so I am responsible for the day-to-day contract administration. So basically, I work with a team of inspectors and material testers, and we make sure that the project complies with the plans and specs. So basically, I'm just in charge of kind of the day-to-day operation for Caltrans. So regarding that exit, that's at Hedge Creek, correct? Hedge Creek Falls exit?
Well, Siskiyou Avenue.
Well, 732, 732 on just Siskiyou Avenue.
And you're talking southbound?
South, well, both ways, but particularly southbound.
So while this project is going on this year, we will have that exit closed for the majority of the summer, but you're talking the big picture, right? Like, not just after this project, not just during this project, but after the project as well, right?
Yes.
So that's something we would have to look into, because it's not really project-specific, but it's definitely something you can look at.
Yeah, so this is, this is a great opportunity for us to talk about general things with Caltrans, but we're here for the project today, and I work at Project Delivery, so I don't have that answer, because that's not my decision. So I wanna make sure that we connect before you go, and I can take your information, so I can get back to you on that.
Is there any, any thought of barricading the right edge of the road so that vehicles pop?
So that's your second question.
Okay, that's the second question.
That's all the blackbirds.
Yeah. So, we've always had vegetation on the side of the freeway since it was built, but we are all having an elevated awareness of the risk of fire after seeing what happened last summer, right? So is that?
Particularly the car fire, it was a vehicle type, and.
Exactly, right? So we're, our eyes are open in a new way to the reality of that possibility in some cases, right? So we have a, we do have a paved shoulder, some significant differences here compared to the car fire location. The car fire took place on a conventional highway, very little shoulder, and vegetation right up to the edge of the pavement. On I-5, we have a much wider paved shoulder and shoulder vacuum out there, where there's room to get out of the lane in general without pulling off into the vegetation. So your question was, have we considered putting a barrier off the edge of the pavement all the way through the project so that nobody could ever drive off of the group service? Is that correct?
I'm talking.
Did I understand your question?
Somewhat, particularly from start of the bridge, up to particularly.
Oh, yeah. You know, we're really hopeful that the northbound side, you know, if there's an accident.
It's gonna back up at some point, I don't know if it's a big routine, but it will back up at some point.
Yes, absolutely, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that it's not gonna back up ever, because it's.
So, I'm just thinking.
But it's, we're trying to mitigate it and do everything we can to keep it from happening. I don't really have a business.
Those signs that say, don't listen to your dad's name.
You know, this isn't funny, but my daughter was coming to visit, she went in and said, Dad, hi with bright red, but there's a side road on her phone. So that, it is true, it's exactly what it looked like.
So talking to ways and Google Maps, and Google Maps, sorry, and Apple Maps, like Apple Maps, I don't know if you guys noticed, they did it last year when it escalated, the Old Stage Road problem, they actually put a sign in the app, that sign that says road closure. But again, it's really interesting, and Sean, you might wanna elaborate on this. So I go back to you. I'm sure if we leave that in Old Stage Road, we will be, you know, because you're going to. Now, what about the Dunsmere?